Oh, the radio, oh yeah, thank you, yes. Yeah, I sounded awful.
Right.
I said "I'm about a hundred times."
Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, November 7th. It is now 7:00 PM. Town Council meeting, the Town Council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. John, read us some prayers.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin our meeting. Remind us that we are all gathered here for the same purpose, to serve the great town of West Warwick. Help this council and those in attendance to engage in thoughtful, productive discussion that strengthens and benefits our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I can say it.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President Miko?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There's a quorum. Public comment?
Public comment? Anybody from the public have anything to discuss? I know I am going to discuss one thing on behalf of my constituents because one person was unable to show up. Pete, go ahead.
Pete Cottrell, 25, New Wicky Street. Good evening. Just to give you guys a short story of what I'm about to present to the council. I got involved with an old gentleman in my neighborhood who's 96 years old, who is one of the last living Pearl Harbor survivors in the United States. I became very friendly with him and... He hasn't received any of his war medals from his wartime. I've wrote the senators. I spoke with members of Veteran Affairs and all of that. I have a letter before me that I got him awarded five medals. He actually lives in, Councilman Messier's ward. So, I'd like to invite the council to his ceremony on November 20th at 3:30. It's at Senator Jack Reed's office. I've mentioned it to...
What is it?
What's that?
November 20th.
Can you send us an email, though, for the council so we'd have it?
Sure.
An email, Pete, please.
Sure. I've spoke with Councilman Goslin. I've worked with Mary Ann on a project. I don't know if she'd like to touch on that. You don't have to if it's not ready. But I just want to address the council and invite the public as well. He's a resident, a longtime resident of West Warwick. So, I'd like to make this something special. He's 96.
What's his name, Pete?
Thomas... I'm a little nervous. Thomas Williamson Williams Hydridson.
It's at 3:30, you said, correct?
Yeah.
Did the senators finally get his medals? Because I know my father had the same thing. He's 94.
If I can approach, Councilman, you can, one...
And Senator Whitehouse was very, very helpful.
Senator Reed helped out.
Yes.
And Pete came to me about a citation. He thought somebody was going to help him write a citation. And I told him, "Just get the information over to Mary Ann and she can help write that citation."
Good job.
Ironically, Pete talked to me about this the last council meeting where he just happened to be walking up and down his road. He's a young gentleman outside smoking a cigar and he happens to like smoking cigars himself. So, he went over, introduced himself to his neighbor, and they got to know each other. And Pete learned all this about him. And so, Pete, congratulations in helping him with these matters also. So, thank you.
It was truly, truly, truly a humble, humbling experience to learn about Pearl Harbor through somebody that was there. It truly was. So, if anybody in the audience wants to attend, they're more than welcome to the council. I hope to see you guys there.
Yeah, I hope that there's no other commitment. That's why you just emailed it to me so I know.
Okay.
I appreciate it and good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other public comment before I make one? Anna?
Hi, Anna.
Hi. Anna Goldreese, Carpenter Court, West Warwick. First of all, I just wanted to say to Jason Lichardi, thank you for the Spook-a-thon. It was fantastic. The kids loved it and your family did such a wonderful job. I just think, you know, they should get a lot of credit for that. It was a great day. It really, really was. I noticed a few things that were on tonight's agenda and I had some questions about them. And I'm not sure if you're going to take questions during these specific time periods or not. You are.
If it's license matters, yes. If it's non-license matters, no.
One is on a claim. I don't know if anybody really read the information that was attached with the claim that I'm speaking of. And I don't know that...
Anna, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
Dave, I thought that the public could speak on...
Advertise matters.
Advertise, not on subject?
Yeah, not on subject. And we could change that later, but I know what you're going to say on the claim. This is...
I'm sorry.
Again, the claim was, has not been approved or denied. It's...
Which are we talking about?
If you're talking about the abber on Pulaski Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Did anybody read the police report?
Councilman Lichardi has made it very clear to us as a council between, talking to us individually or email. This has been an ongoing matter and the department head did say deny it. But we haven't discussed it. As a council tonight, we can discuss it. We don't know if it's going to be denied or accepted. I mean, that's still to be determined.
What is your question?
The point I wanted to make is that the way she, again, I don't know this person. I'm not thinking size of any kind. The way she described it when she wrote it out, it was the snowplow pushing slush. In her police report, it clearly states that it was frozen slush, ice, so on and so forth, and the snowplow was going at a certain speed. I personally have experienced a snowplow flying through frozen slush. And I have seen that fly 40 feet onto my property and hit my garage. So, how the Department of Public Works could say that this is not possible, I don't understand. That being said, the part that bothers me the most is to see the line that says, "Snow must go somewhere and if a resident decides to install this material or anything like it in harm's way, they also need to take responsibility for it." So, if we put a fence on our property, we're fair game?
No. We...
That's the way it reads because the description is, "It's the person's fence along the border of their property." No?
It all depends on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Just like a mailbox. Depending on where you...
I have one that's on the house, so I don't deal with the mailboxes that fly, luckily. The other issue that I had is that we are going to be having a discussion period that involves additional recycling pickup. I thought we were broke. How are we adding expenses and even putting that up for discussion? If we're lucky, we can afford what we have now.
You know, any council member can put anything on the agenda to discuss, doesn't mean it's going to pass. Doesn't mean it's going to go forward.
It's kind of a waste of time, don't you think?
Well, I'm going to be talking about something in my ward that's very important to me and I know it's been going on for years. Just like everybody else had issues in their wards. If a council member, and I think...
And it has nothing to do with what council member brought it up. It's an expense.
Councilman Messier put it on the agenda to talk about it. Now, Councilman Padula and I know the expense. We've been through the process of privatizing garbage, going with the new bins, how much each bin costs a town. If we went to weekly or bi-weekly recycling... We used to have weekly recycling and the recycled bins were one-third the size.
Right. I mean, these things are enormous now.
And now they're three times the size. And yes, if you have, you're going to have one or two. I have a constituent of mine that ended up with another recycled bin because she has six children. There's eight people in the house. So, they go through a lot more. We have offered Nicole not to go out to the houses if they're having issues and we work with them if they're having recycling issues. But if you've got six or seven residents that are overfilling their bin, we're not going to give you 20,000 bins more or we're not going to go into a weekly recycling. We'd rather possibly have them purchase another bin or get another bin.
Absolutely. That was my concern is that here we are, we're going to increase more spending when we're not supposed to.
We also, we also brought that up before. Recycling, we're supposed to make money with.
Which it isn't, which barely, from what I heard.
But anyway, without getting on that subject. It was discussed, I don't think it was with this council, it was with the previous council, that seeing that it's recycling, if they have the problem week after week, we would even give them a recycling bin to keep making them happy that they're recycling and...
Right, and that's reasonable. I mean, even if they had to pay $20 for an extra bin...
That wasn't this council. That was the previous councils.
Okay. I was just concerned that we were considering increasing any type of spending in a town that can't afford to.
No, we haven't really even talked about it.
Okay. Well, again, public comments first, so I've got to talk when I can talk?
No, I understand.
Sorry, Dave.
No, I understand.
All right. That's about it for tonight.
I'd still, Dave, you know, not to bring it up later, to bring it up now while we're on public comment. I still would like to hear the public on topic. Like before, we always let the public speak on topic. The only difference was we had the public comment at the end. Now, we're having it in the beginning. And I think we should discuss, you know, where they could talk on topic also.
Thank you.
Just my two cents.
My concern, and I have, I think, two rows of constituents, is the storm that we just had here last week. And unfortunately, I was not here to even deal with the situation because I think it would have been handled a little differently, was Knight Street. Knight Street where Max Bowaway is. There's a few different issues. One of the biggest issues is if Max Bowaway gets clogged, then the water just backflows and fills up Knight Street and floods Three Houses, very bad. And then the outskirts will catch water in the basement or whatever it may be. I know the Perrys usually get about three to four feet of water in their basement. My concern is the response time and our response as a town. We know that's a problem area. And we know it's usually an easy fix by coming in with a backhoe and cleaning the front of the drain real quick and it'll restrict, and water will flow a little better. There are other issues outlining as far as drains on Wakefield Street and whatever. But the main concern is when that gets clogged with leaves, debris, sometimes a mattress, sometimes a bike, whatever it may be, we come in with a backhoe. Soon as we clean it out with the backhoe, it flows pretty quick. I received a phone call at 3:00 AM Las Vegas time, which would have been 6:00 AM here. Actually, I'm sorry. It was the night before. One of my constituents, Nick Lanigan, parked his truck in the middle of the street because he called the town and told them the street is flooded and no cars can get by. Nobody responded to that matter. Whether he called DPW, some called Police Department, and the dispatcher told them it's going to stop raining in an hour. What do you want them to do? They had four feet of water coming through that street. Now, at 3:00 AM, they called DPW. Nick Lanigan called DPW. Nobody showed up until about 10:00 AM to clear that brook. Once it was cleared, the water just went right straight through with no problems. I'm just concerned that we had seven hours of response time. And again, I'm three hours off because where I was, I'm getting the phone calls at 3:00 AM saying, "The town's not here yet. The town's not here yet." And unfortunately, I was sleeping. I apologize. But I think personally, if I was here, things would have been handled a little differently because I would have got the phone call from Nick Lanigan or whoever and I would have been able to get on the phone with Dave Lombari or Fred Gill and say, "Hey, you guys need to get your butts down there." And that would have happened. But unfortunately, by the residents' calling, they didn't get the same response. And that's not fair to the residents who live there. They should get the same response that a councilman gets, especially if they're calling. If they're not bothering their councilmen, and I know a couple of them knew I was in Las Vegas. So, Nick knew I was there. He didn't want to bother me, but he did. He said, "Dave, nobody's responding." You know, so my only concern again is the response time. And we, I don't think anybody was prepared for this storm. I mean, on a town level, we did the best we could. I know National Grid wasn't prepared for this storm. And I think, when we know there's three, four inches of rain coming, that we need to be, we possibly should put the backhoe down there because we know it's going to get clogged, especially in this type of season where all the leaves and all that are washing down from Cranston. The other thing is the cleaning of that brook. Fred Presley has always said to me, you know, the town way back in the day used to maintain, keep the brush, keep the brook clean. During Fred Presley's time as planner and manager, he said, "DEM has put a stop to us cleaning that brook." I want to get that reconfirmed because it's not fair to the residents that brush and who owns the brook? And if it's the Holy Ghost, we need to get them in there to make sure they maintain it. If it's the town, we've got to go in and maintain it. But that's the only concern I have. I think the residents who are here tonight... So, we can't clear it before? We have to wait till it clogs to clear it? Well, the drain, the drain comes down the Max Bowaway and cuts across Main Street. Yeah, I know where it is, yeah. It's a four-foot, it's a four-foot...
Concrete cove.
Cove, yeah. You can basically, if you sat in there, you could sit in there and slide right into the main, across Main Street. So, what is it typically that's clogging? Anything? We've had bikes. We've had mattresses. This time around, it was trees brushing whatever. Those are things we could...
Same trouble on Phoenix Avenue over there. It's the same brook.
It's the same brook.
It's in people's backyards and they don't own it. They can't do anything to it. And we're restricted. And from years ago, when Betty McGarrett time, they used to send the guys in there to clean them.
The prisoners used to go in and clean.
Right.
It just, but now DEM has stopped us from cleaning that brook. So, we need to make sure that, we've got to let DEM know that we have residents who are flooding because of this debris that's in there. Does anybody from Knight Street want to speak or you could just come up to the mic and state your name?
Yeah, when you were out too, Liz came. She knew you were away. She came to see me.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Santos. I live on 24 Knight Street. My mom's 78. Been bailing out water since I can remember. But it's just, my house is like washing out now. After they unclogged the brook, my basement still pours water for an hour because it's so, surrounded with water so many times that the foundation and dirt's disappearing. It's washing away. It's terrible. They wait way, way too long to get a backhoe there. You know, it's just, I know you can't stop the water problem, but common sense, you get three inches of water coming, that brook's going to get clogged. Three inches, four inches of water. I've been here all my life. You've got to have a backhoe there. You know? It's just, my asphalt was pulled away that much from my foundation now. Because every winter, it freezes across and moves away. We get flooded again and it's over and over. You know? And a lot of stuff comes up from up top. Because I never see nothing in the brook with the Holy Ghost as much, a little bit of debris or brush, but other than that, I don't see nothing. I think a lot of this shit comes up from up further up. This is the worst I've seen it this time. There was trees like this on the side.
A lot of people throw it in there too, Anthony.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, what, what...
It is coming from up top.
A heavy rain, every heavy rain, that was it. That's it. The backhoe, by the time the backhoe gets there, it's too late. It's too late.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say.
So, Ernie, I think just we need to focus when we know we're going to have big storms coming. Sir, if you want to just come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roy Pachico and I live on Wesley and Knight Street and I'm at the corner. And ever since the engineers fixed the Wakefield Hill, we never had this problem before. And now, since that hill has been corrected, the water comes right down that hill. Doesn't have a chance to go into the brook. It goes right down Knight Street. And I'm at the other end and we always get flooded.
You're right. You're right. When DEM did that rule, because I have the same problem on Louise Drive. They tie the drain in and let it go in a person's backyard and it floods them. And whoever our engineer was or our building official then should have put a stop to that. But they didn't. But you're 100% right.
The only solution I can think of is that you have to cover that brook. You either put a big pipe that goes, that goes from Burnley Game Row where it starts up there and it comes down. It's a little trickle of a brook up there. Then it comes down and builds up. And by the time it gets down to Knight Street, that water doesn't have a chance to go into the brook. It just comes right down to Knight Street down there. You have to either put another drains up in there to compensate for that water or you're going to have to cover that brook up. That way, there's no debris that will go into that brook. Nobody will throw anything into that brook and it'll just stay the way it is. That's the only solutions that I can come up with. And if, the town has to come up with engineers that are going to correct this. And we aren't tired of fighting this. We've been fighting this for over 10 years already. Now, this is going to be an end to it. I've been living there ever since I was a kid. And before that, that was just a trickling brook. And then they closed, I don't know who put the retaining wall over there. But now that retaining wall is full with debris and stones and everything and it's just a mess. Now, either you have to cover that up, that brook, or you've got to put new drains in. But I want the solution solved. We don't want to go through another rainstorm and be worried about the water's going to come in into our houses. And those houses on that street, they were originally on Main Street. And then they moved those houses on Knight Street. And ever since then, since you fixed that Wesley Street, not Wesley Street, Wakefield Hill, that water comes down, hasn't had a chance to go into the brook. Comes right down that street. You can go there and see it comes right down. It doesn't have a chance to go in there. So, you guys, you have to come up with some solution and we want it solved. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comment on Knight Street? Ernie, so if you could just check in with DEM about cleaning that house? Because it is affecting, I mean, we've got to keep that clean. It is affecting. If that debris is coming down there, even from Wakefield Street over to Max Bowaway, that's filling up with leaves and whatever else now. And on a windy day, every leaf that's in that neighborhood, because it goes just like that, that's where everything goes. It goes in there. It's an alleyway for it. And he is right. The walls are collapsing, but we need to find out who owns it and get it resolved. Thank you. Dave, should we bring up the town calendar and public comment? I save it for water reports. Anthony, one more, one more comment?
Yeah, just want to say our street sweep would help our street sweeper. The streets fall forward, Jack, from the storm.
Poop. Thank you. All right, next.
Proclamation celebrating 20 years Make a Difference Day?
Are they here today?
I thought it said Jack.
Ronnie, Jack's here.
Jack, you here?
Yeah, they're here. Always hiding in the back, Jack.
Hey, Jack, how are you? All right. This is a proclamation celebrating 20 years of Make a Difference Day. Resolved that the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick proudly joins with the West Warwick Junior Chamber, J.C., in marking our community's 20th year of participation in the nationwide event of volunteering in Make a Difference Day. And further, the J.C.'s will continue their extraordinary community leadership in concert with area-wide college and high school students, scouts, explorers, city air associates, the J. Arthur Trudeau Memorial Center, corporate employees, and all other public-minded volunteers in making this a special gathering for our entire community at the award-winning J.C. corridor and arboretum. And State Senator Donald Rock Riverwalk in service to humanity. And therefore, in dedication to these many endeavors, the West Warwick Town Council is honored to extend their appreciation, gratitude, and congratulations to the West Warwick J.C.'s for their commitment and dedication to the Town of West Warwick and hereby declares Saturday, October 21st, 2017, as the J.C.'s Make a Difference Day in West Warwick. Thank you, Jack.
Jack, again, it doesn't go unnoticed what you guys do, what your organization does for this town. They're always there. Thank you for doing it.
Yeah. Somebody want to take a picture? You have a camera?
Jack, congratulations. Great job, as always. Ronnie, good job, Ron.
Good job, Ronnie.
Roy, good job. You don't have enough room.
Little piston over here. Stop moving, guys.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Citation celebrating small business?
Again, this is another citation. We received an email, Small Business Saturday. We declare Small Business Saturday in West Warwick every year. So, Saturday, November 25th, will be declared Small Business Saturday in West Warwick. So, please take your time. I know Christmas is coming. I hate to say it. It's coming very fast. Just remember the small businesses in West Warwick and make sure that we do local shopping. Thank you.
Town managers' report?
Thank you. We held our monthly meeting with the Department of Revenue and the Auditor General's office. We spoke about the FY '17 Corrective Action Plan that the council adopted, as well as a little bit about our FY '18 budget. Also, part of that meeting, we spoke about the state motor vehicle excise law that was adopted to reduce, you know, the assessments by 95%. So, what you'll see today is a number of resolutions would put that plan in place, you know, reducing our, reducing our motor vehicle levy to 95% amongst some other changes. And we'll be, once we send out our revised tax bills and make a commitment to reimburse anyone who may have prepaid their motor vehicle tax at the higher rate, because we sent our tax bills out before this law was adopted. Once those happen, in February, will be reimbursed approximately $539,000. So, you'll be having, you know, acting upon a number of resolutions today that will put into place the revised bills and the reimbursement, which we're scheduled to get February 1st. And that's all for my report.
I just have one question. I know I spoke to you at a sewer subcommittee meeting. It's been quite a while now. I know you just got in. We just put a finance director in place. Well, very shortly. But my concern is, and I want to make it public and I need answers. This council deserves answers. The taxpayers deserve answers. My understanding now, it's almost $8 million that we're in the red, 7.4 million, somewhere around that vicinity. But it's over $7 million. My concern is, where did the money go? Who okayed the money to go wherever it went? And who's responsible? Now, we have an order to company that, just let it happen. I think they're on the hook for money, whatever money it is. They're bonded. We can recoup probably a fraction of the money that, I don't know, I'm not going to say misappropriated, but used without council approval. Are there any charges that are going to be brought up? The council's got to speak of with our previous town manager, our previous finance director? Because at the very least, it's fraud and collusion. They never let us know once. Everything was fine. I sat here and I asked the previous town manager, and you all know, dozens and dozens of times before you new guys came in. And whenever I found a deficit, I said, "1.2 million." Oh, no, no, we're fine. We even have a surplus. I called private conversations. I asked for all the paperwork that, uh, the finance director gave me. The numbers didn't match. Uh, as I kept asking questions, all of a sudden, one packs up and leaves. And, uh, we get no answers from the rest. The other concern I have is that we're using our sewer fund, which is surrounding communities' money. In case of emergency, a disaster with the sewer plant, it'll cost millions of dollars for a burst in one of these sewer lines. And my concern is, where are we gonna get the money if, God forbid, this happens? It's not supposed to have been used. It's been used every time we brought it up, before Ernie's time, before anyone says time, before.
We'll gain Bauer's time, just wait.
Right. They started, they took it out. It's supposed to be in a separate fund designated for surrounding communities. This isn't our money. This is surrounding communities' money. And we're using it. And it's, I find it very troublesome. And the employees of this town and the taxpayers are gonna pay. This is on our shoulders. And it's not fair to the employees. It's not fair to the taxpayers. This money, they misrepresented their reports. They blatantly lied to me. And it lied till the last day when we met, when Acting Town Manager Corullo was there. And I asked the finance director. He said, "No." I looked at the Acting Town Manager and I said, "Is this true?" He said, "No, it's not true." They are. So, right till the end, I was lied to. The taxpayers were lied to, and the employees were lied to. This council has to act and act accordingly, and they have to pay for their mistakes. So, I wanted that on record. I want this done sooner than later. Now that we can get some serious numbers, Ernie can do his job. A finance person can do her job, and maybe the puzzle will fit together.
Well, just a few comments. Councilman, I'm not sure where that seven point fi- four million dollar figure came from. But as far as the expenses, uh, what was spent? I mean, it's contained in prior audits. Uh, and we're working on an audit right now for seventeen. So, you can go into FY sixteen, and there are tables and charts which will show what was budgeted for revenues and what was received, what was budgeted for expenses and what was spent. And, you know, sixteen is available. So, just going through sixteen, you can see the revenues that for FY sixteen were about eight hundred thousand dollars less than what was budgeted, mostly in property tax collections. And the expenses were, uh, over about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, in FY sixteen, it was a little over a million dollar deficit that year. But you can go and see what departments were budgeted at and what was spent. You can see what revenues were expected and what was received. So, there is an accounting of where funds came from and were, uh, spent. And they were all spent on town-related issues.
I understand that part. But they depleted our rainy day fund, which they had no right to even touch without council approval. That's over three million dollars that just went without council approval. We didn't get a red flag. Everything was fine. And you asked too, Dave, "How's our finances? How's it look?" Evidence great. People in this audience heard it. Things are great. Sure, they're great.
The rainy day fund was brought up last year, not this year, but last year. When Councilman Giroux was here, he and I did talk about it. Um, you know, Angelo, I know what Ernie's saying, what you're saying, when you keep saying eight million, over four, almost four and a half, almost five million dollars was approved by the council. Three point four went to the school department in two thousand twelve, thirteen, for the Corullo action we settled on. I'm going by what you, what you said in the rainy day fund. And then we approved one point four. The other, and what Ernie's saying, you keep saying that the auditor, the auditor puts it in there every single year. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong. It, it's us, it's up to us to read that audit and ask those questions. We get thrown, the auditor comes here, throws it in front of us, and then leaves. So, we have to follow up on that audit. Now, like Ernie said, if you go in there, and one of the key ones is fire overtime. We go through it every year with fire overtime. Over three hundred thousand dollars of over expenditure in fire overtime. And, and that's happened every single year. And then if your collection rate is at ninety-six percent, you only collected ninety-five, that's the eight hundred thousand dollar difference. That's, it's not that money is missing or being misused. It's to pay the bills that have occurred.
Mike, there's two, two part answer for you. First of all, when Fred took over, we had four point two million dollars in the rainy day fund. Maybe a little better, maybe a little less. I don't have the numbers in front of me, I have them down in my office. After he left, there was two, three hundred thousand dollars left.
Four hundred and thirty-two thousand.
We didn't approve. I didn't approve.
Angelo, I don't think anybody's ever argued with you on that. I think.
Okay. What my point is, whether it's three million or eight million, whatever, I might be off. I could be. I'm not no financial guy, but I know my, my numbers quite well. And someone has to pay for taking that money. They even broke the home rule charter. I don't know if that's a twenty dollar fine or what. Without council approval, that rainy day fund, whatever you wanna call it, whatever, I call it a rainy day fund, was moved, was used without the previous council and without this council's approval. Someone has to pay the fiddler, because the music stopped.
I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I'm not disagreeing with, I'm just disagreeing with the eight million versus three million. Other than that, they, they, somebody, and whether it's the auditor, I mean, the auditor's gonna tell you where it is on, on paper, what we owe. So, in my opinion, it would be the finance director and the town manager says, "Okay, we need to pay these bills, let's make sure we pay them." Um, you know, and I know, the rainy day fund has always been a floating fund because, you know, we gotta maintain that five percent, which we're no longer maintaining that five percent. But that fund has always, now, if there's a surplus next year, say there's an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus, that goes in the rainy day fund as an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus. So, that fluctuates from time to time.
We, we would never, it was never brought to our attention that they were depleting the rainy day fund.
It's in the audit, Angelo. I circled it last year, I got it out, I even put a note on.
You knew they were draining that fund without council approval and units.
We brought up last council, Councilman Giroux and myself, a year and a half ago said.
We were already talking.
We were down to one point four.
Yeah, we were talking a few hundred thousand dollars. Then it got more, more, and more.
We were talking two million. Angelo, we were down to one point four in the two thousand fifteen one.
And then he said, and, and he, you were right here. He said, "That's only on paper. We have the money. It's the same thing it was. That's only on paper." And John stood up, and I got that tape. And John stood up and he said, "Don't worry about it. That's not, we're just showing that on paper. But we have the revenue, we have the money to cover the rainy day fund where it's supposed to have been." Now, maybe I'm losing it, but I remember that like it was yesterday. And it kept going on and on and on. Now, something's wrong, someone has to pay, and I'm just not gonna let it go. And the taxpayers shouldn't, and the employees shouldn't. Because they were spending money like there was no tomorrow. Hundred thousand dollar, eighty thousand dollar positions. This position, that position, buying this, buying that. So, that's my complaint. It's gonna be my complaint till the day I get the answer. And when someone pays, like I said, the fiddler, because the music stopped.
Let me ask a question. What, what can be done? Like, what, what is, what are, what are the options anyway?
That's a good question. I, I don't know.
Well.
I'm just saying devil's advocate, if you're a hundred percent right, what do we, what can we do? Tim?
The only thing that you can do regarding the fiduciary duty of the, uh, auditing company, which Angelo indicated was bonded, was to file a lawsuit. But I don't think you're gonna find that the auditing company was liable in this matter, because the auditing company is only taking the information they get from the school committee and the town council. So, the question, whether or not there was approval of a dollar being removed from the fi- um, rainy day fund or the surplus, or a dollar being put in, ultimately, there's gonna be expenses that have to be paid on each fiscal year. And if the expenses have to be paid, whether it's by contract, collective bargaining, or whatever, and if there's not enough revenue in that particular year, there's a deficit. Now, the question becomes, and again, just using simple numbers, if there's a ninety million dollar budget and only eighty-five million dollars in revenue came in, five million dollars had to be paid. The five million dollars had to come someplace. Now, if you go back and look at each and every council meeting minute and/or audio tape as to what was discussed, and in the minutes, you're gonna find that whether the council liked the answers or not, it was proposed to do. Because dollars, I mean, when you approve a budget at the, at the financial town meeting, and then the town people say yes, they approve it. And that budget includes those ninety million dollars in expenses. You have to pay the ninety million. Ernie, you've been in finance for eighteen years in the city of Warwick. You have to pay it. And if you don't have it, and you can't get it from the rainy day fund, like West Warwick used to do, they would call the tax anticipation notes, financial anticipation notes, or bank anticipation notes. You'd have to take those on a thirty, sixty, or ninety day basis with a lot of interest to pay your bills. West Warwick has not been in that position since the mid to late eighties, where we had to resort to that. However, once you pass a budget, and the budget gets passed by the people on an annual basis at the all-day referendum, that is basically telling any debtor out there, or creditor, excuse me, that you're gonna get paid. Now, if there's not enough tax dollars, because as David indicated, if your tax collection rate is ninety-seven percent, ninety-six percent, or ninety-five percent, but you don't collect it in that particular fiscal year. Now, you may collect it the next year because of tax sales or the year after that. But that particular fiscal year, if that revenue is not coming in, you still have to pay the ninety million in bills. So, if you look at it from, if someone stole it, somebody misappropriated it, somebody took it to Vegas, I think that's gonna be very difficult to find out. I think what you're gonna find out is that there was ninety million dollars owed, ninety million dollars had to get paid. Now, where it come from, where it came from is the town savings account. Now, the question is, what authority was given to Town Manager Presley, or Town Manager Stamfler, or Town Manager Thomas, or Town Manager Bauer before that, all the interim town managers, and also the finance directors? But remember, when bills have to be paid, bills have to be paid. So, as far as lawsuits right now, we'd have to go through everything as it relates to what the finance, uh, before John became the finance director, I believe the town had hired his company? So, does that, was that company bonded? I'm not sure. But I mean, there's a lot of information to take a look at. And there's a lot of, uh, council meeting minutes, council audio tapes, council agendas to go through, and also all of the, um, uh, the pre-budget finance hearings that you guys have. A lot of these issues pursuant to each department is discussed in detail by the department heads, who are telling you that, listen, we're gonna be ten million dollars over because of whatever reason, and, you know, not ten million, excuse me, but say, uh, ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars from, and Dave Lombari, I'll use you as an example. If it doesn't snow out, you're not using all of those, uh, resources. However, if it snows too much, next thing you know, your plowing budget went from this to this, that wasn't really covered in the budget. So, I'm just saying is, to, to determine whether or not there's any action going forward where the town can recoup any monies, there's an awful lot of legwork to be done.
But I mean, it's millions of dollars. And it's going on the backs of the taxpayers. And what I said, all through during the budget hearings, whether these guys were here then or not, from when that five-year plan started, they were projecting, projecting. They were spending money before they even knew what was coming in. And I kept putting up red flags. And every, "Oh, no, 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 you got it all wrong." My council members, "No, no, no, you got it all wrong." And then Ed Giroux, I have faith in my finance director and my town manager. So, guess what? How much faith does he have right now? And I don't blame Ed. But when we ask these questions, that's why we have a finance director, and the first question we ask you, Ernie, a question that Mark Corullo asked you, was when you started seeing a red flag coming up, like, what are you gonna do? And you said, "We're gonna make the council aware of it right away." They broke that. They didn't do it. And they knew it.
This, for my, my two cents, to ask what can be done in the past, uh, my belief is nothing. What is done is done. Expenses were incurred, paid. So, at this point, it's looking forward. Looking forward to, we've, looking at the eighteen budget and preparing a nineteen budget. I don't see the rash, the, the, I don't see the legal reasons to go back, or if there are legal reasons to go back. Auditors presented information. Now, was it drawn to your attention? I don't know. But the, the information was there. A presentation was made, uh, to the council, and, and in there, there was talked about a deficit. So, again, is there a legal recourse? Again, I'm not an attorney, I don't know. But I don't believe anything was, was, uh, spent inappropriately in the sense that it was all city-related, I'm sorry, town-related expenses. As was said, revenues didn't come in as expected. Expenses were close or maybe a little bit over, and that's where the deficits occurred. And as was said, at the end of the year, you have to pay the bill. And it comes from your fund balance. If you have a surplus, then you add to your fund balance. If it's a deficit, then it's reduced. And that was, that's what was happening for a number of years to, uh, the last audit where you had four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Now, again, corrective action was taken for seventeen, so as the audit progresses, we anticipate it will be in the positive. Don't know how much. But again, just, whatever the decisions were, they were made. And, and as I look at it, we have to go forward and spend the time and energy looking at where we are now and where we're going. It's my, it's my opinion.
I understand that. But it's awful hard to move forward a hundred percent when our past, we have to worry about what we spent, how much of a deficit we're in, because that money's never gonna go back. That's my concern. And what's very troublesome, being a taxpayer, not a councilman, is representing my constituents. But being a taxpayer and paying taxes, I'm not, it's not going on my shoulder. And I'll vote for my constituents that it doesn't go on their shoulders.
Ernie, where do, where do you stand now as far as, um, reviewing the budgets? You've been here about a month.
Right.
Are you still finding more money that was more, more of a deficit?
Well, I think what, you know, some of the fundamentals that were placed in, you know, the seventeen budget were carried over to eighteen. I think the collection rate was dropped a bit. Uh, but still, there's gonna be pressures on property taxes to make that. Uh, there are expenses that, uh, are gonna be exceeded that we have. So, at the present time, you know, in preparing some information, we have a new finance director coming on that will work with us. And then we'll prepare what we believe is a reasonable estimate for eighteen, and then bring that to the council, similar to what was done, uh, this summer. So, so we are looking at identifying the scope of the problem and attempting to develop what mech, what resources will be to offset that.
So, it's being worked on in the second quarter, not the fifth quarter.
Right.
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 Which, in the previous year, happened in the fifth quarter. Now, something was said to me the other day, and I wanna make it clear, that this budget that was handed to us was not a John Semino budget. You gotta remember, he was out. He was out battling cancer. This was a Fred Presley budget that was brought before us with the assistance from John at home. So, I just wanna make that clear also. He did come in at the later, later dates of it. But there, there's some things on the budget that Ernie's been looking at. And, you know, like you said, he's gonna bring it back to us with the next few weeks, and we can go from there.
But shouldn't the finance director be looking at the budget from July first?
I don't disagree with that.
Through the budget process on, on a regular basis?
Of course.
So, to say that it's not a John Semino budget, I'm not picking on John. It could be finance director X in every town should be looking at the finances of the town. I mean, Ernie, you're a finance director. You know, what are you doing for like, for eight months out of the year? You're looking at the budget and seeing where we're in the deficit and where we're.
Foreseeing it.
And Jay, we should be getting a monthly report.
We should be, we should be getting a monthly report from, from everybody.
But I had, I had a conversation with Kristen about this. Um, and I used Christine from Sewer Departments, um, where she gives her monthly report. She basically says where we stand with revenues versus the budget, where we stand with expenses.
We did talk about that, correct?
And it's, it's a very simple math. It, it's, you know, if it's not lining up, it should put a red flag up right away. Um, you know, we, I know I just asked about overtime with the fire department. We're already over budget by ten percent. And we're only half, we're not even halfway through the year yet. So, we gotta look at that and say, "How do, how do we fix it?"
Dave, my, my.
Dave, my, my concern is, and my anger, is when you ask a finance director that, and they say it's fine, what do you do then? Like...
That's not, we're voting on that. We're voting on somebody, we're, we're counting on a depart, it could be any department here.
I, I think...
And they're telling us, alright, we're, we're in the positive, everything is great. Alright, I believe you. You're hired to do that job, you're telling us what we should know, and then we're making decisions based on that, and that could be anybody.
Jay, I think a lady named Helene came up here to the microphone about three months ago, and she said, you're only as good as the numbers that are presented to you. And if we're given the numbers, and those are the numbers that are supposed to be factual, we're, we're only as good as those numbers.
But then our job is to hold those people responsible if they give us the wrong numbers.
And, as you can see, I mean, what do you want, what can we say from here?
So, Tim, that's not fraud and collusion?
Look, you've got, you've got civil terms like malfeasance, misfeasance, negligence. In order to have some criminal fraud, or collusion, or misappropriation, or larceny, or robbery, you talk to different standards, but again, if, if, go back to the original budget, if the council passes a budget that's got ninety million dollars in expenses, and the daily activity of the finance director is looking at what's coming in, and if what is supposed to come in doesn't come in, the bills still have to be paid, correct, Ernie?
Correct.
Okay, so now what happens is, we expect a tax collection rate of, say, ninety-six, but for that particular year, it's only ninety-four. So, you're two percent down, that two percent equals how much?
Almost two million.
Two million dollars.
Oh, ten.
Well, Angel, I'm just saying, now what happens is, when the auditor comes in, it's usually the January or the February of the year, usually, say, six to eight months after the fiscal year is closed. The auditor has been saying that there's been a deficit posture for the town, because there's not enough money coming in to pay the expenses. And I don't disagree with the five-year plan issue, but if you look at the five-year plan, that initial five-year plan clearly shows there's gonna be savings in revenues, ninety percent was on the school side. So, even if the schools save that money, it did help...
But what, what we're failing to see, what everyone's failing to see, the taxpayers seen a budget, they voted on a budget, nowhere in that budget, it says revenue, nowhere in that budget did it say, we have to take money out of the rainy day fund because this doesn't work. Nowhere in that budget does it say, we have thirty-four million dollars in revenue, and nowhere in the budget did it say, we're only gonna get twenty-eight million. The people voted on a budget, a, a realistic budget, a budget that was put right in front of them, and they didn't follow that budget. They stole from Peter to make Paul rich.
The estimation of the budget is based upon what's going to happen in the future regarding tax collection. The bills are already set as of the date of the contract, excuse me, of the, of the budget, so the, the town knows that there's ninety million dollars in expenses. Now, for the next three hundred and sixty-five days, the town's gonna scramble to come up with ninety million dollars in revenue. Now, what happens is, if we could break contracts because there's not enough revenue to cover them, fine, but you know what's gonna happen? Gonna end up in court. So, the suggestion is, here's an estimate, here's a budget, there's gonna be ninety million dollars in expenses both on the town side and the school side. Now, the revenues that are coming in, you've got federal revenues, you've got state revenues, town revenues, taxpayer revenue, add all that up, if it comes to eighty-eight million dollars, it's a two million dollar deficit. So, how do you come up with the two million to pay the bills?
Cut expenses.
Well, that's what they should've said on the five-year plan.
I'm not disagreeing with that, Mrs. Padula, but the bottom line is, the expenses can't be cut for that particular fiscal year. That fiscal year, those expenses are in stone. Now, what I'm trying to get at is, you're asking a question about whether or not the town can go after civilly or criminally. At this point, I don't know. But the point Ernie made, if you're gonna spend a lot of time going backwards to find out if there's a case, that's gonna be a lot of time and a lot of money spent to probably achieve something you're not going to achieve, and you're better off moving forward.
So, Ernie, Ernie, I have one more question. So, we're four months, I know you're, you're not four months in, but we're four months in for this budget right here. Do you have a handle from the department heads as to the track they're on as far as the spending?
Well, the interim manager, Mark Carullo, placed a spending freeze early in the fiscal year, and, and isolated certain expenses, like capital and others. So, so, again, starting off, beginning of the year, conserving, directors were told, and I believe they are honoring that request and trying to not spend money, try to save where you can, only, you know, overtime when you really need it, things of that nature, trying to reduce. So, yes, I believe directors are, and I think directors are gonna be given figures to meet in their budget reductions going forward. So, yes, I believe they are attempting to reduce their expenses where they can.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions from the council, Ernie? Thank you, Ernie.
Minutes of previous meetings, resolved that the minutes of the October seventeenth, two seven, thousand and seventeen town council meeting and town council special meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Move in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agendas, license applications, resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Move in second, any discussion? Any public discussion on licenses? Hearing none, all in...
I have to recuse myself from one of them.
You have to recuse yourself?
A change of address for mine, mine is in there.
Alright, just recuse yourself from all of them. For the record, Councilman Messier recused himself.
I'm gonna take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those licenses that just been approved, Bazaar Raffle License, Signature Automotive, actually, the St. Joseph School was the Bazaar license, Elite Collision, Gendron Jewelry, Quetchy's American Citizens Club, Little Smiles, State Side Auto Sales, KDA Fitness, Balloons and Novelties for Tree Lighting, and Change of Address, they've all been approved for Wicked Beautiful Rhode Island.
Correspondence, resolved that the town, the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Move in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Town council acting as liquor commission, alcoholic beverage licenses renewal, resolved that the attached alcoholic beverage license renewal having been advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date, no remonstrant or objectors present, the same is hereby approved, subject to all inspections being completed, health department approval, all taxes being paid, and the letter of good standing being received.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those have been approved, Centerville Liquors, House of Liquors, Joyal Liquors, Breakaway Liquors, L and K Corporation, Mistle Enterprises, Class B Famous La Fasse Pizza, Spotten Food, Westcott House, Rue Quing Lee, Filippo's Twisted Pizza, all Class B victual licenses been approved, there's like pages and pages and pages, so, they've all been approved.
New Class B limited victual...
I'm gonna recuse myself on this.
Liquor license, resolved at the following application, for a Class B limited victual liquor license having ever been advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date, no remonstrants or objectors present, the same is hereby approved, Unwind Beer and Wine Lounge LLC, four hundred Providence Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island, zero two eight nine three.
I'll move the resolution. I'll second the resolution.
Move in second, any discussion? Sir, just come on up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
My name is Anthony Fossa, F O S S A, I reside at four fifty Providence Street, which is Riverbend Condominiums. I received a notice regarding Unwind Beer, it says located at four hundred Providence Street. I don't believe there is a four hundred Providence Street. I went down that area...
I think it's right next to Copycats, am I correct?
The Kiku, the old Kiku flowers is, is four hundred.
Well, there's, well, that's a one-story building, there are two offices in front.
Yep, there's a...
The one on the left, yeah, the one on the left is in style, that's four zero two. There is no number on the right which is ascending, so that would mean, that would be higher than four zero two. There is no four hundred Providence Street that I can find. Three fifty Providence Street is the Fu Ming Chinese Restaurant. Again, going ascending down Providence Street. After the Fu Ming Chinese Restaurant, there's the bike path. After the bike path is that one-story, two-front office building. The first number on that is four zero two, next to that, which again, would be ascending, is a vacant building, that's, I believe, where the flower shop used to be. Where exactly does this, the location of this particular...
It's in the flower shop.
That is the spot, right there.
It's the spot, and if you GPS it, it shows that address. It shows that building and everything when you GPS it. So, we, we can look at the address, but it's, that's exactly where it's going, is the Kiku Flower Shop.
Okay, which is a very small office building, I, there's probably, what, ten-car parking lot in the beginning of it, in front of it? What type of a lounge is this, that is the size of a flower shop, really?
Actually, Angelo, since you recuse yourself, you can come up and speak on your behalf of...
I'm glad I've seen his face, because we were about robbed, and we seen him on the camera today, and he had the same jacket on.
I took, I took pictures of it, because I could not find four hundred Providence Street, I'm saying, where is four hundred Providence Street?
As far as, far as parking, Pinger owns the building, Eminem Properties, there's a vacant lot next door, and I hope we get that busy where we gotta use it, it'll fit a hundred cars. And there is on-street parking also, it's not a no-parking place, and when we're open, the hairdresser isn't gonna be open. She closes at four, between four and five, and if it comes to be as busy as I hope that it will be, I like to fill that parking lot up, but we have all the parking we want over there, and that goes with Pinger's property.
Do we know what time they have to close at night, as far as having a liquor license?
It would be one, one AM.
One AM. Could we verify what the address is? Because I'm telling you, it's not four hundred Providence Street. It cannot be four hundred Providence Street.
It's four hundred.
Why don't you ask the town's...
How, how can it be four hundred Providence Street if the building, if the office before it is four zero two? It can't be four...
It just means...
It's been four hundred...
Hold on, hold on, you have to come up to the microphone, and Mr. Planner, have you looked at the plans for this building yet?
I, I have not, but it's considerably be mislabeled as four oh two, it is four hundred Providence Street.
It is four hundred Providence, Robert Gilman was one of the owners of it, it is four hundred Providence Street, it's been four hundred Providence Street for forty years, Mike Pinger owns the property, Kiku Flowers is four hundred Providence Street, if you Google Kiku Flowers, it comes up four hundred Providence Street when they were open. There are records online for being registered as a business for four hundred Providence Street, so if they were, if they were registered four hundred Providence Street with their Kiku Flowers five years ago in West Warwick, which got approved, there's no reason why four hundred Providence Street wouldn't be in there, unless Mike Pinger changed the address recently, which he didn't. It's four oh two on the left and four hundred on the right.
There, there is no number on the right, there's no bell off yet.
Sir, sir. The town planner here is also the fire chief, you see, for nine-one-one purposes, but the bottom line, if it's four hundred, four ninety-eight, four oh four, that building you recognize is still there, correct?
I recognize it's still there.
You recognize that there's a building there?
Yes, there's, there's a building there, there's two offices.
Right, so, to the left, there's a hairstylist?
Yes, inside.
And to the, and to the right, the question is whether it's four hundred, four oh two, or whatever. What I'm saying is, you can check with the chief, if, as far as nine-one-one purposes, I believe it's four hundred.
Believe it or not, my direct communication is watching this.
Okay, so, so for, as far as nine-one-one purposes, it's four hundred. Whether it should be ascending or descending, I, I can't answer that question, but I think we've proven the fact that the building is there, it's where Mr., Mr. Pinger does own it, that gentleman, I believe, is gonna be a pod owner of the establishment with Mr. Padula. So, I mean, as far as the numbering of it, that can be corrected very easily, but right now, I think your issue is more or less some other issues, whether or not it should go regardless of what the number is, correct?
Yeah, well, I, I was just wondering what, what exactly the number was, and I, because I was looking for it, and I couldn't find four hundred.
That happens sometimes.
Yeah, a lot of numbers in West Warwick, the streets are not like, necessarily in the way that you would think, the streets were odd, and odd and even, or on the same side, it's west, not just West Warwick, I mean, it's Rhode Island.
It happens everywhere in a lot of places.
It's numbered through post offices.
But for the most part, your nine, your nine-one-one addresses are the accurate numbers.
No, alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Town council acting as town council, ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, second reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance, sorry, I'm still in the audience.
Second.
Move in second, we discussed this last month, just language cleanup and, any comment? Hearing none, roll call, vote?
Jay? Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, first reading sponsored by Councilman Padula, an ordinance amending Chapter eleven Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section thirty-four, routes where trucks are prohibited, and Appendix C of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Dave, this was where they forgot, on the paper, it was where Wakefield Street...
Well, they had Prospect Ave.
Yeah, Prospect Hill Ave. So, that's where, why we had to do, redo it again.
Any other comment? Hearing none, roll call, Jay?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
You switch us, he's, no, I'm, I'm Jay, Jason.
I don't know, I don't, every two weeks I have a different move.
We figure it out, we figure it out.
Cancellation of taxes, tax collector, resolved as the attached cancellation in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents presented to the tax collector for approval of the town council, in accordance with Article twenty-five, Section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances, is hereby approved, the original list is on file in the office of the tax collector.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion? Rose, can you just come up to the mic, I gotta answer a couple of questions.
I can bring the reports.
No, you don't need the report, I, I see majority of these deceased.
Yes.
So, with that being said, you know, I, I actually was talking to the probate clerk today, and Paula, just having a brief conversation over phone about a different matter, and they were expressing what a great job you've been doing as far as getting taxes collected through probate and whatever else. I, I just discovered that a previous probate clerk wasn't collecting taxes during probate for all those years.
No, all those years.
And that's what this is product of.
This is product of that.
And just recently, you, you've been working with the lawyers even on some later than six months, because you have six months to collect that...
Right.
Through probate, but you've been working with the lawyers, so congratulations, thank you for taking the initiative. But I, I was stunned and appalled that we had a previous clerk in there for ten years that I know of, that didn't collect a single ounce of taxes through probate court. And we as a debt collector are entitled, credit card companies are entitled, so, Ernie, I just want you to be aware of that, so that way that you can keep an eye, but I know the new clerk is...
We are working very well together.
You've had over a hundred thousand dollars in collections, I'm being told?
I'm not, I'm not sure of how much, as...
I heard you did a real good job at it.
Thank you, we're trying.
So, for ten years, we, we lost money that we should be, we should've been getting?
What a...
What a, that's awesome.
But just, just understand one thing, though, everyone that dies does not have a probate estate.
Exactly, if you don't...
So, you're not talking about tens of millions of dollars, so, if there's a probate estate open, that gives the tax collector the opportunity to address it with the court by making the appropriate filings of the pleadings.
Still a lot of money, though, for the cost of that many years.
Just wanna make sure everyone...
But now we're...
Everyone that dies does not file a probate estate.
Right, and we're trying to just clean up the files and get them all straightened out.
There's a lot of old ones in here, too.
There are old.
It's good to get them off.
You said six months is the, is the limit?
To, to file a probate claim. But they, I asked Michelle, she said, they said sometimes it goes on like a year and a half before the closed claim.
Probate matters can go on quite a long time.
Yeah.
Depends if they contest it or whatever.
As long as the claim is made within the six-month period, the town's protected.
That it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rose, good job. Too bad you weren't working on commission.
Could be an incentive. All right, any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Amended tax levy to address motor vehicle phase-out abatement for fiscal year 2018 per Rhode Island General Law 44-341-1 to 44-341-2.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, I just wanna discuss this real quick, and so you can answer this. This page, and if, this is all for the, basically, the car taxes that will be credited. I just wanna make it clear, everybody in this room has a registered car in West Warwick is getting some sort of credit. The problem with this amended, uh, letter O, number two, is all five of us are on it. So, we all have to recuse ourselves. So, we have a choice here. You can let us vote on it.
No.
Or, we can't vote on it, you can't get your credit, it's up to you.
Plus, not to mention our family members.
There's no way we can recuse ourselves from all these matters.
Well, in all seriousness, because you are being treated just like everyone else in the town, you're not being singled out, you're not being selected out, it's not going to benefit you individually, you certainly can vote on this.
I just wanna make sure...
I remember I'm paying car taxes, too, so my opinion is kinda jaded.
Well, I, I know I got forty-nine relatives that are on this list.
Only four, only forty-nine, Dave?
So, if you wanna take out...
Does some move?
Some, some don't have car registration, some are walking.
I have every one of my relatives.
It's, it's unreal.
Over a hundred.
With that being said, again, just wanna clarify, are we sending out checks to whoever? And if they've already overpaid? And also, how are we handling lease companies? That was a question that was brought up to me, because the lease companies, and I, this is the first I have leased a car. They send me, they just put it in my payment of all my taxes. So, who credit, do I get the credit, or does the lease company get the credit?
I believe the leasing company gets the credit, because they're paying the taxes.
But as far as...
Well, I just wanna make sure it gets taken.
The issue of re, the issue of reimbursement, whether or not it's practical and logistical versus giving the taxpayer a credit, I mean, that's, that's something you're gonna have to decide, because normally, the town doesn't give money back in the form of a check. It just credits things going forward, and that's usually...
No, they give them back.
If...
Well, I'm just saying, that's usually the easiest way to do it.
Right, but if someone had paid their bill in full...
Right, that's a, that's a different issue.
Yeah, we owe them the money back.
The annual, whoever paid their annual bill in total versus whoever paid accordingly tax.
Right. And then that's gonna reflect, third and fourth quarter will reflect the, the five percent.
Now, the other question I have is, when does the state intend on paying us the difference? Because I don't wanna see it in 2018, it makes us shorten our revenue on the 2017 side.
Ernie?
Yeah, the next cycle is February 1st. So, once the revised tax bills go out, and we pledge to the state that anyone who paid in full will get an actual refund check, they will release the funds February 1st. Is that gonna be the case as well for next year as well?
There's a little difference, because another twenty percent may come in.
Will, will we get the money back from the state again next year? And next year, we will, we will, uh, plan on that, and budget for that. I just wanna point out to the council...
Don't cut, don't cut the checks until the state money comes in.
I was just gonna say. Well, I, I just wanna make something clear, because us who have been around since 2010, when you used to get a $6,000, um, credit on your valuation from the state side, the state took that away from every city and town, and we had to make up that two, three million dollar, um, loss in shortfall when the state did that.
Doesn't mean that at some point, that's gonna happen.
Just remember one thing, the state right now has promised that they're gonna give every city and town their fair share.
For how long?
In five years from now, if there's no car taxes, and they stop paying cities and towns, new legislation comes in and says, no, we're not gonna give every city and town. Remember, you're gonna make up that revenue somewhere. I'm just making it, just in case, I, I may not be here, but I know some of you are here for four years. Just remember what I said here tonight, is if the state decides not to pay it, state decides not to pay it, and it's on your backs and the taxpayer's backs.
Well, that's where all our reps and senators gotta stick together and not vote for that.
Correct.
Rose, do you know when the...
Most of the communities in harm's way.
Those, uh, changes gonna bomb?
Once you, once you approve the resolution, then I can do the next step and adjust the accounts in the system. And then, our goal is by the first week of December to mail out the revised third and fourth quarter bills.
So, more or less, if somebody paid $20 on a tax on their car, they'll be credited for the following year?
You get a credit for the quarter, or you got...
It is, well, you gotta...
Unless they paid the entire tax bill for the year.
It'll get credited, yeah, well, the $20, that's a little...
Well, mostly, everybody that's under, what, a hundred dollars?
Under a hundred dollars has to pay in full.
Has to pay in full.
So, there is about, what did I say? Sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five motor vehicle accounts that are being, are receiving an abatement. Um, but some, some will get refunds and not a letter of advice.
We get 12% interest on that also? Big 12% interest.
All right. Any other questions for Rose? Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Motor vehicle phase-out abatements resolved that the motor vehicle phase-out abatements in the amount of $539,264.72 are hereby granted per recommendation of the tax collector in accordance with Rhode Island General Law 44-341-1 to 44-341-2 for fiscal year 18. For approval by the Town Council, original list is on file in the Town Clerk's office.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, this is the eighteen-hundred-page list, so it wasn't printed out or able to scan in, so just...
Can you read them, please?
Because... I'll go by alphabetical order, who's got the whole night to themselves? With that being said, any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Addition of taxes resolved that the addition, the attached addition in the amount of $7,663.37 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the Office of the Tax Assessor.
Move the resolution.
Moved.
Can I second that, I'm gonna recuse myself.
You're gonna recuse yourself, do you need to recuse yourself? You're on here.
Yes.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Moved in second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Cancellation of taxes, tax assessor. Resolved that the attached cancellation in the amount of $2,108.10 presented to the tax assessor for the approv, for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the Office of the Tax Assessor.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Cancellation of taxes resolved that the attached cancellation of cancellations in the amount of $3,672.19 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the Office of the Tax Assessor.
Move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of vehicle and equipment for use by the fire department and the financing thereof through an equipment lease purchase agreement, and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and related instruments, and determining other matters in connection sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Chief, just wanna give some clarification on this, just so they know what we're actually financing.
Correct, I'm sorry about this. Um, this is the last phase.
You break it, it comes out of your budget.
It just did, he just broke it.
Uh, this, like I said, this is the last phase of, uh, um, the purchase of this truck. This, we received a grant for $337,000 and change on this, and it's gonna look a little confusing on what... Because of the grant...
Believe me, I've seen confusion, chief.
Because of the grant, we, we've had to go through a, a lot of different phases of purchasing this vehicle. We have, we have to put the full amount of the truck in there. And when the truck is delivered, hopefully, May, June, thirty days before the truck is delivered, I, I can request the funds from the government. We'll get it in our accounts. Then that down payment, we may break onto the, to the lease company right away. And what's gonna be left over for lease, leasing is gonna be $207,000... Yeah, $207,756. And then, from then on, it's gonna be approximately $46,000 a year on a five-year lease on the truck. So, tonight, what you're doing is approving the, this financing. You already approved the purchase of the truck and the grant award and all that, so if you have any other questions...
Any questions for the chief?
That's already budgeted for, it was already in there, so anybody who thinks...
It's, it's not coming out of the, um...
It's not coming out of the taxpayers' money.
That's correct, not a dime.
Thank you. No other questions for the chief? That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion on this?
Yeah, do we, did we move this?
I don't think we moved it.
We now moved it.
Is that a resolution, or was it not?
Didn't you just read it?
I, I, but nobody moved it.
The resolution...
I'll move the resolution, I thought I did.
I'll second.
Moved in second, oh, we broke that, we have the reading.
If I, if I may ask, I do have to get a, a lot of the paperwork signed tonight. Because of, because of the delays of this, I had to redo the contract with the, uh, truck company because of the...
I think you've got a problem.
No. Because of the regulations of the federal government, we had to put special wording in the, uh, contract with the...
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resolution asking Congressman Langivan to request that the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, consider reassessing the flood insurance map firm for the Town of West Warwick for properties in proximity to Turner Drive and New London Turnpike sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, John?
So, this is just basically a follow-up. If you remember, last meeting, Representative Serpa came in. She basically wanted us to put a letter together that could be sent to Congressman Langivan, asking him to send FEMA back out to reassess the area surrounding the Flat Top Pond, specifically on Turner Drive. So, the planner drew this up for us.
Pretty good planner.
He's a good planner.
Oh, Mark, how are you?
Any questions for that, for John? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Contributions. Contribution for nonprofit organizations, veterans, and food cupboard.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, um, just wanna, I'm, I'm reading over an email. I asked Paula to send me over some, uh, information from last year. It's obviously, the holiday seasons, the food cupboard always comes to us around this time, so we can help them with the, uh, helping the needy during the holidays. And the Veterans Council comes to us for a yearly stipend to maintain Memorial Park right next door. Last year, we gave the Veterans Council $1,500 and the food cupboard $6,900 for a total of $8,400. We have $9,700 in the account. So, if you take a look at that, that's eighty-four, and then the two contributions for high school banning KC Cats would be a hundred dollars each, so we'd be at $8,600. Does anybody, do we wanna maintain the same, or...
Uh, I just would like, I can't ask the finance director yet, but I'll ask Ernie. Is that gonna put any burden seeing how we're in a mess? Should we be given the same, should we be cut down, should, what's your opinion?
Look, and these are community events, there is a budget for them, you know, in your budget, I mean...
This year.
Yeah. We budget, we budget $10,000 into that account this year. We use $300 for various donations, I think, uh, the Sons of Italy and a couple others that came across. So, we use $300, we have $9,700 left in that account. Right now, if we use eighty-six, we'll still have some in, in case we have any issues with anybody coming.
I think we should keep it the same.
I, I personally, the food cupboard, and, you know, we had, at, at one time, we had a councilman who was totally against using this money. And, you know, and I, I actually asked people door-to-door one time, and I said, you know, about two cents, maybe one cent of your tax dollars, go to the food cupboard to help the needy, and they said they wish we could give more. So, I, I think this is a good thing for the town, we keep a lot of fa, I mean, I, I, I forgot how many, is, is he here tonight? He's not. It was a few hundred families that they feed from West Warwick. And this isn't something, you know, and, and he even came up here one year and explained to us that during the tough times, families that never came to him before had come to him during, you know, the financial crisis in 2010, '12, when people were losing their jobs, um, you know, family with five, you know, never, never used the assistance program in their life, but they used it. So, it touches a lot of families in, in West Warwick, and I, like I said, I think it's miniscule, and I think it's a good, um, gesture from the taxpayers and the council itself. Now, the Veterans Council, we know where that money goes. They have two ceremonies, there and here, and they take that $1,500 for the wreaths and the ceremonies and whatever else. It is town property, and we just help maintain, and I think $1,500, I wish we can give more.
How do we, can you donate?
Uh, just come to the mic real quick. Uh, there, there are ways you can donate, um, you can go to the food cupboard, you can speak to them. Um, you can actually speak to Kelly here, she's actually a member at the, uh, you're, you're the, uh...
I'm, I'm, we actually, under, uh... Kelly Doherty-Gothab, um, the, the Vets Memorial is actually at Post Two. It just happens to be there because of the way that the property was dated. And we have those events every year. Post Two actually affords some of the expenses. We invite everybody who comes down to come in for soda and hot dogs for free. That's all comes out of our donation, so if you ever wanna donate...
Yeah, so I'm a ten-year veteran, how do I donate to the veterans?
You talk to me after the meeting, and I'll, I'll take care of that.
I think you like Kelly.
My, my wife works for the Director of the VA in Providence, so I can get donations.
We'll talk to you.
Thank you. So, I, I think we should keep it ra, rate the same, I think $6,900, and then that'll keep us through the rest of the year if anybody...
Enough to give to the kids at the school and...
Yeah, they'll put us at $8,600, we'll still have $1,100 remaining in that budget item.
Yeah, because most of them are $50 and $100 donations.
So, for contributions for nonprofits, we'll keep them the same. Maybe I just write that down, $6,900 and $1,500. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And contribution to high school banning KC Cats was a hundred dollars each, we brought that up at the last council meeting. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Not at all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you.
Appointments, reappointments. Appointment Finance Director, whereas pursuant to Section 701 of the West Warwick Homeworld Charter, the Town Manager is recommending the appointment of Kristen Benoit to the position of Finance Director. Resolved that the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick hereby confirms the Town Manager's recommendations to appoint Kristen Benoit as Finance Director of the Town of West Warwick commencing November 13th, 2017.
I'll, uh, well, I don't move anything. Move the resolution, second.
Moved in second, discussion?
Yeah, I looked at her, uh, resume, remarkable, and glad, certified CPA, I mean, there's so much. I was impressed. Welcome.
And again, um, for you don't, for who don't know, John gave his resignation. There will be a transition period, Kristen will come in. Ernie has spoken to John, and there'll be some sort of transition where John will be working with Kristen, bringing her up to speed. And so, he's not just leaving, he's getting, he's bringing her up to speed, so there's no, what did he do, what, how did he do this? And, and so she can ask the questions and work together for the next couple of weeks. Again, uh, we should thank John for his service with the town, um, for years. It's been a tough four years, and especially in his health, he did battle some issues through that, and he's always dedicated. Um, no matter what anybody says, I still say he was always dedicated to the town, dedicated to his job. And he's, even though he gave his resignation, I still say he's dedicated. I still say, I still have conversations with him once a week and where, you know, I ask him questions and, you know, he's been giving me answers. He hasn't been holding back. So again, even though he's resigned, he, he's kept the best attitude he possibly kept. With that, any other questions? With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, Kristen.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Appointment, Tax Assessor, whereas pursuant to section eight oh one of the West Warwick Homeworld Charter, the Town Manager is recommending the appointment of Salvador Secocchio Junior to the position of Tax Assessor. Resolved that the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick hereby confirms the Town Manager's recommendation to appoint Salvador Seco- Secocchio Junior as Tax Assessor of the Town of West Warwick commencing November twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second and, um-
Again, I-
Is it Sal? Or Sal? So Sal, a couple of friends of mine who work in Cranston or whatever, and I, I like when we get somebody else from another town. They usually call. I know Ernie, I know somebody from his finance department called me and said, "You're stealing a good guy." And that happened this weekend when I was at the craft fair. I bumped into a couple employees from, uh, Cranston, and they live here in West Warwick. And, uh, there's three, I think, that working, worked with you over there, and two of them said, uh, that we're stealing a good guy. Uh, I didn't see, I didn't meet the third one, but, uh, they don't wanna see you leave, but, uh, welcome aboard if we accept tonight.
Again, hearing nothing but good about your resume. It's great. Uh, I probably talked to the same two people David did, and they said the same thing, so become highly recommended.
Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Resignation from the Board of Assessment and Review, resolved that the Town Council hereby acknowledges the resignation from Donald Carlson of the Board of Assessment and Review for the Town of West Warwick.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? If we could just give a letter of thank you for his, um, his time served on the board. With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resignations from the Pension Board, resolved that the Town Council hereby acknowledges the resignations of Donna Lucier and Louis S. Vestano Junior of the Pension Board for the Town of West Warwick.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Again, I spoke to Lou. I tried to keep him on until we got a replacement. Unfortunately, he was unable to do so due to work restraint. So, um, again, if we thank Lou for his time and commitment, that is not an easy board to serve on. It's a very difficult board to serve on, especially during these times.
Donna Lucier too.
And Donna, I'm sorry, both, and we're down to two members?
Three.
Three? No.
Two?
Two members right now on that pension board.
I'll take care of one of them right now.
Uh, with, all, with that being said, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointment for the Pension Board, resolved that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Pension Board for the Town of West Warwick with the term to expire November eighteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second?
I'll move the name of Paul Bertrand. Paul's been a long time. What's that?
No, I was gonna say I'll second it.
He moved the name of Paul Bertrand, second and discussion. Um, you know, we've always had this discussion about town employees on the pension board, and it's their pension. Um, you know, I think if anything, they'll pay more attention to what's going on with their pension money and spending- and whatever else, especially during these times, so, um, I think Paul would be a good asset there.
Twenty, twenty-two years here.
Yeah.
And he's a former.
Been here a long time.
He's done investment.
Well, he's definitely worried about his-
There's, there's no question.
Pension, yeah, definitely. So, um, with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Welcome, Paul. Is he here?
I don't understand.
Appointment for the Board of Tenant Affairs, Clyde Towers, resolved that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Board of Tenant Affairs for the Town of West Warwick with the term to expire April two thousand eighteen.
Move the resolution.
Second.
And there's only one name here, Nancy Lorenz?
Yep.
I'll move the name of Nancy Lorenz. She's a tenant there, Dave?
Yes.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it.
Reappointment for the Board of Tenant Affairs, Public, resolved that the Town Council hereby reappoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Board of Tenant Affairs for the Town of West Warwick with the term to expire November two thousand nineteen.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
And I'll move the name of Colleen Lemmerick.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Colleen, if you're here.
No.
Congratulations.
Appointment for the Sewer Use Tax Board of Review, resolved that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Sewer Use Tax Board of Review for the Town of West Warwick with the term to expire October twenty twenty.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
And I'll move the name of Mary Ann Tomaso.
Second.
Is anybody, um, Angel, this would be in your-
Yeah. Uh, comes highly recommended. Uh, there's no other names to put, and we're short there. We need another alternate. Because one time, they couldn't even have it, and like I discussed before, so anyone who's interested in putting their name into that board, I think it's a twenty-five dollar stipend a month, so you're not gonna get rich, but it'll pay for your gas.
All right. Hearing, hearing none, the comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Discussion action. Recycling, one. Recycling moved to every week pickup sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Jake, you put this on and-
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify something. Just 'cause I put something on the, on the agenda, doesn't mean necessarily that I want it to happen, but if my constituents bring it up, it's, it's worth bringing up for discussion. Uh, I necess- I don't necessarily think we need it every other week, but what I'd like to see happen is make it easier for people that do have an excess of tra- of recyclables to get them another bin without a cost if they need it. Does that mean we're gonna send out another recycler into every single resident in the town? No, that doesn't make sense. But if somebody really needs a bin, I think it's cost-effective for us to give them the bin without charging them seventy-five dollars. Now, garbage is, I don't agree with them getting an extra garbage, but as I said, we make money off recycling. We at least don't necessarily lose money off the recycling. Um, so I think, I know there's people that have, have told me, like, "I'm not gonna pay seventy-five dollars. I'm just gonna throw the recyclables in the garbage." It doesn't make sense. Um, I know in the past, in the previous council, you guys had kind of not allowed, uh, them to give out bins. Is that correct, or is that correct?
No, we've, we've allowed, I mean, it, it, on a case-by-case basis. If it's a two-person home, and they're saying they're using the recycling or whatever, then we gotta look at it, look at it and see what's going on there. My situation, I know I had an eight-person home, and they did give them a bin.
Yeah.
Um, but if it's just-
Nicole is like-
If it's just a two-person bin, um, I, I know, I have people who collect bottles and put them in their own bins, or whatever it may be, from work or whatever, and they take them home with them. Um, not here in West Warwick, but, you know, if there, if there's a two-person house that's overfilling their recycle, hey, great, they're doing a lot of recycling, they recycle and everything, but we have to look at the situation. Now, those bins cost the taxpayers, and, and we're not even done paying for them yet, seventy-five dollars each. Now, if you went to Home Depot or wherever, you're getting, and the, and these bins are warranted, guaranteed, so if you buy one for seventy-five dollars, you get your tipping fee, uh, fee paid, fee paid for the lifetime of your barrel. Your barrel can be replaced for a lifetime, so you're paying seventy-five dollars for a lifetime barrel. You're not, you're not paying-
And I'm not disagreeing with, I, I think they are-
It's a case-by-case basis, and I think that's what we need to look at.
And especially how big the old bins were. I mean, these are like at least four times.
Three times the size. Um, also-
And I, Nicole, I wanna clarify. Nicole does do a good job of going out there and checking, but I wonder if we can do something on our end to make it easier for her to give out bins if somebody needs an extra size.
Well, see, Dave, we already told Dave and Nicole, if I'm not mistaken, Dave's here. Use your discretion. If they were filling the bin and they needed more, instead of throwing it into the garbage, they would get the recycling bin at no charge.
I'm just ki- I'm curious, and I don't know this, has anybody ever, has anybody been denied that's asked for a recycling? But I don't know if that's the case or not.
Nobody's been denied. Everybody's said it's either seventy-five dollars or-
Yeah, I just wanna clarify.
Nobody's ever been denied.
Okay.
First of all, if they call up, and I'm not sure who you were talking to, if they even called Nicole yet or not.
It's possible they did.
But she'll go out and she'll go through it and make sure that they're recycling properly.
Yeah.
And if they are recycling property, uh, properly, I mean, she'll recommend, okay, you need another bin. Um, if they can afford seventy-five dollars, like, like David said, it's, it's a lifetime bin. It's a lifetime tipping fee, and it's a, it's a warranty. If they break a wheel, we go out and fix the wheels. I mean, for seventy-five, if you go to Home Depot, you're paying forty bucks for a rubber band.
I, I totally, especially with the old bins, um, in the past. But I just want, I just want, if somebody needs one, I wanna make sure they get it.
Those bins are not a bad deal.
Do you still have two sizes?
We, we have some smaller ones left, okay? Some of the older people that took the, uh, smaller bins have been selling their properties. A few passed away. The new people have been coming in and asking to exchange the smaller ones for the big ones now.
Yep.
So we've been swapping them out too. So I got a couple of different sizes, but I don't have abundance of them.
Yeah.
Okay? And at this point, I mean, you guys are aware, there's a spending freeze, right? Okay, I can't afford to go out and buy bins and give them to everybody.
I, I, that's not, that's not even what, and it's probably not a big-
But if there's a hardship, we'll give them a bin. That's not a problem. But we try to work through the problems first.
Absolutely. And I'm not, I'm not at all recommending we give out a second bin to every household.
No, we can't.
Of course, of course, no, of course.
It's a case-by-case basis.
I just wanna make sure the people that are, they're trying to recycle, and in the end of the, at the end of the day, I mean, I don't know how much we're making, but we're not losing money with recycling.
There hasn't been any recycling dividends in the last couple of years, so.
And it's, and that's, and I don't, we, we're doing twice as much recycling, but again, um, you know, I have personally seen it on my street, and after I saw that you were bringing this up, my last garbage day, not this week, but last week, I took a walk up and down Summit Avenue, Atwood, took my dog for a walk, and was looking at every bin. I saw two that were overflowing, and that's because they didn't wanna, one of them did not wanna break down any boxes, so you're just throwing a full box in there. And that's-
That's different.
And, and Dave can attest, 'cause he lives a block from me, and, and nobody was overfull, and that was a two-week-old, um, situation. The only ti- so again, I, I, it's a case-by-case, and if it's a hardship, whatever it is, but they're being told seventy-five. There are many people who've come in and paid the seventy-five because they feel, hey, you know what?
I wanna, I wanna clarify one other thing. I know you guys do this. If somebody's having a party, or it's Christmas, and they go, "Hey, we're gonna need an extra recycler bin," you do allow them to pay the seventy-five dollars as a deposit, and then they can bring it back-
Yep.
And get the seventy-five dollars back. So if somebody, it's like a one-week thing, you know, maybe they're having a Fourth of July party, Christmas week, they can do that.
Yep. Just, just to cover the barrel in case it doesn't come back. And when it comes back, we're the ones that wash it out and put it back in stock. So I mean, we got plenty of stuff set up, and if, we even have a, a can in the backyard, a recyclable dumpster, you know, so if you're overflowing and you can't do it, you can actually bring it down and drop it off too.
For the record, they are open the first Saturday of every month?
First Saturday of the month, five days a week, and then the first Saturday of every month. So I mean, there's plenty of options for people to do their recycling, or their yard waste, or whatever else they gotta get rid of.
Absolutely. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. All right. The next discussion action is light repairs and replacement. Uh, this was actually brought up by Councilman Messier again, but it was also brought up by me prior to this. Um, I know Ernie met with Prism. Um, you've asked him for updates, and unfortunately, they haven't given us an update. Um, in, in my opinion, the only way this is gonna get rectified is if you hit them in the pocket. Stop paying them.
Exactly.
And tell them we're not gonna pay them until these lights are resolved, and simple enough.
'Cause I, I have a, you have a, your street is, uh, begins with an M, right?
There's, we have-
No, but there's one particular, the new, no, but, well, but in particular, when it, when it came to my attention was a new street, Moschetti Court, uh, the pole on Nine Bassett Street, and it goes back, I just was looking through my emails. It's maybe at least four, close to four months ago, and they haven't even gotten back on it when Joe Argenti reached out.
There was one in April, it hasn't been-
And that's you, yeah. Mine was a little bit after that.
Mine's been since April. Um, but that's not, new street lights? I understand this is National Grid, actually, they, they hold the, uh, the codes on that.
No, but it kinda, it still ties into the same issue.
National Grid has to come out and put the pigtails on, and if they don't do that, then Prism can't do it. So we all know how National Grid is very upset that every city and town that has gone over to Prism, they actually, uh, are being told, "Don't rush on anything for Prism." So that's, I'm not holding Prism accountable for that. The lights that are being taped and duct taped to the side of the pole-
Right.
And Joe Argenti is sending them a list. In their contract, they said they'll come out and repair or fix any light within five days.
Yeah, it's not even close to that.
It's been months on some of them. Now, like I said, the only way this is gonna get resolved, if they're not gonna pay attention, they will pay attention when the check's not coming their way. And if we need to send them a letter saying if these items are not resolved within ten days, we will not be sending them.
I wouldn't go back against the contract, five days.
No, no, it's a breach of contract.
Right.
They have the right to cure. If they're not gonna cure it, don't pay them.
Exactly. So we're gonna let them cure, we'll give them the opportunity to cure it, because with that being said, they were, in, in a little bit of their defense, National Grid came out and put in two hundred, they're putting in over two hundred and fifty new poles. Prism already did their job and put the lights up. National Grid took the lights down, and now, instead of National Grid putting the lights back up like they used to, they're now just taking them down and duct taping them to the side of the pole. So, 'cause they don't want, it's, it's being a spiteful thing with them.
Somebody gets hurt and it falls on someone, one day my mother's house fell.
What recourse do, I mean, I know-
For, for, for a large lawsuit.
And I know, we discussed Prism, we know we don't pay them if, if they don't work in a timely manner. What recourse do we have with National Grid for doing this? Tape, duct taping poles?
That's what we're gonna figure out.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna tell you that's an accepted practice within their, you know, expertise, but it's not. But then again, if, if something does happen, tragedy or catastrophe.
Yeah, well, we could still be held responsible.
Well, can we reach out to the PUC? 'Cause anything they take down from the pole, what do they do with the street signs? They put the street signs back up, right?
No.
No?
No.
I mean, I think with, this is something that we need to go further with the PUC. If National Grid is taking down this, the pole, or Verizon, whoever's doing it, right now, I think National Grid now owns all the poles again, um, that if they're stripping them down, they should redress them. It's, it's, it's simple. I, I mean, it's, it's a light, two bolts, street signs, two bolts. Uh, you know, and then the other two companies, Cox and Verizon, go and do their pole transfer also later on. But I, I, I personally think that National Grid, we have to probably reach out to the PUC. Maybe we can hold them accountable to doing it.
PUC.
The PUC, I mean, yeah, PUC.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, but-
Could just call National Grid, it's the same response.
I know. I understand. Trust me.
Okay.
But I think if they don't respond, hit them in the pocket. That's usually when they respond the most.
I agree.
Okay.
Let me think about it, Ernie, if you're not doing your job, we say we're not paying you. And guess what, you're gonna start doing your job, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Or leave.
Hopefully not leave.
All right. Bike path maintenance?
Jay, this is you again.
Yeah.
Busy this week.
Yeah, I'm busy out there. Um, so, I know it's a little bit early to be thinking about this, but I don't wanna wait till next spring. Um, and we have, uh, as far as bike path maintenance goes, I walk a lot on the bike paths in Coventry, Warwick, Cranston. Always look better than Westworld. We hired some kids to go out there and do maintenance, but what they maybe, not to say they did a bad job, but they went out there maybe once. Um, I think next year, we need to come up with some kind of a plan to, I, I don't know whether it's hiring, I mean, we discussed at a council meeting recently, maybe hiring a landscaping company, maybe, uh, adopting the spots as if we do in some of the other areas in town, which I know some local businesses had expressed interest in that. And if that's the case, it won't cost us anything, if businesses are interested in doing that, or looking into the cost if, uh, for landscapers, uh, to hire them to do maybe portions of the bike path that aren't adopted. Um, so if any business is out there that's interested in adopting portions of the bike path for maintenance, you know, now's the time to come forward because, and maybe from April to October. I mean, and even as far as graffiti, I know Dave did a good job clearing up some of the, uh, some of the graffiti that was on the bike path. But if we had somebody, if we had a landscaper out there once a week, uh, and they see something like that graffiti, it could be something that could be taken care of. And if you gentlemen have anything to add to that?
No, it's, it's been a yearly situation where, you know, we run into the bike path and I don't know if it's staffing or what, but it seems like the last place that's thought of, especially during the summer.
And a lot of residents, uh, are out there all the time, um-
Don't compare us to, to Coventry. Coventry got a bond of multi-millions of dollars to redo their bike path.
Coventry's also a lot bigger. It's, it's a lot, in Westworld, there's two and a half miles one way, so it's five miles total. Apartments are a lot smaller. I spoke with Tony Duffy about that today. As far as a landscaper wanted to come out and take it out, take it on, when you look at the adopted spots, it's more of like beautification. And you have your sign out there, look what I did. When you go out to the bike path, it's really, you're just coming and you're cutting, you're cutting down.
It could be the same thing, you could, absolutely be the same thing.
But it's just a lot to maintain.
I could tell you Ray Beatty had a, uh, Michael Street Service come in with their big, and they cut everything back about five years ago. It was ten thousand dollars to, to main, that was one time.
Yeah.
One-time deal.
One-time deal, ten thousand dollars to cut it all back. Now, if we gotta do that three, four times a year, you know, we gotta figure out how to maintain that. Whether or not we buy the right equipment. Um, one of the things that I've brought up, and I, Duffy and I have joked around about it, is, uh, one of the Ford tractors that have the sidearm that actually go down and, and cut like that, and it cuts the big brush. Um, but it's a two-hundred thousand dollar expense, where do you get the money?
And where I get a lot of calls is, is Robert Street, we get a lot of calls because the, the residents there can definitely see it, you know, it's more accessible for the public eye, Dave has something to add to it. We're making you, making you walk tonight, Dave, we're giving you a workout.
We have a, we have a parks department that has one full-time guy, okay? I take two of my labors and I lend them to the parks department for eight months out of the year. So that's three guys. There's six baseball fields that are used all the time, there's two soccer fields to maintain, there's tennis courts to maintain now, there's basketball courts to maintain, there's the, the, uh, buildings that are down there now that have to be maintained with all the bathrooms and stuff in it, okay? Those guys are straight out, all right? Um, we bring in some summertime kids, if we're lucky to get them.
I understand that.
This year we got three kids, we asked for five. Those kids work from the time they get out of school, but then they quit in the end of August to get ready to go back to school.
And this isn't, this isn't-
And they can only work four days a week for four hours a day. That's all they can work. So I mean, you know, we're limited, and our budget for the parks department is probably the smallest in the state.
I understand, this isn't an indictment on them, but I just feel like-
No, I'm not saying it is, but you know, in the past, we've asked for one of those flail maws, where we can go up there and cut the sides of the paths back and all that kinda stuff. I mean, and this year was a wicked growing season. You see how wet it was? And then the sun would come out, that grass would grow a foot in a week.
Dave, what is, what is the cost of renting one of them?
I haven't found anybody that actually rents them. Plus, it's a dangerous machine, somebody's gonna be trained on it in order to use it too. I mean, when it goes up there, and that blade comes up this way-
Oh, no.
There's a, there's chains, and there's also blades in it that will whip it around. You can't just have any Joe Yo-Yo and his brother go in there and run the thing.
We, we should hire someone that's not a Joe Yo-Yo and his brother then to operate it.
Well, I mean, hey, we ended up with you.
All right.
So anyway.
What's the date of your retirement?
Fifty-four days. But anyway, yeah, that flail mower would definitely help. And you know, with that there, we could also put the, put the deck down and, you know, cut ten foot on each side of the bike path to keep the growth coming up.
That would be a six-month rent. You know, you're looking at green seeds in April, April on.
Yeah. If you could do it, yeah. But then again, I don't have the money to, to go into a-
Is there any, any, any D E M grants out there coming up, Ernie, that you would know of?
There are, there are, I see D E M grants that are available, Senator Satchel, I gotta reach out to him. Uh, I know John's had some conversation with him because McCarthy Field, they were looking to fix that lip and everything else. So, um, there are some D E M grants that are out there. Um, we had, we had gotten one last year. Um, we'd taken the paperwork in. I'll get with, if we could reach out to Senator Satchel and find out, um, what that was, I don't, I just-
How much, how much money do we have in open space? Do we have any money?
There's not much of any, no.
I think they just collected nine thousand.
Yeah, but you're talking a hundred thousand dollar machine.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm talking a different story. Speaking of D E M grants, I've been applying for D E M grants for ten years now for a salt shed. I just got approved for two-hundred and ten thousand dollars this year. And I talked to Ernie about it, and there's no way that we could meet the match, and I had to turn the money back.
What is the match, is it fifty percent match?
Fifty. Two-hundred and ten bucks, yeah.
Two-hundred and ten thousand, hundred percent match.
Yep. D E M should pay for the whole thing, then they won't have to complain that the rain's making the salt go in the ground. We were gonna match part of it with labor and materials to, you know, do the, uh, excavation and the building of the shed and all that stuff. But we can't, we can't swing it now, so we had to turn it back.
Just hope there's no snow this year, maybe it's snowing.
No, I won't be able to, because I need that grant to do it, you know, so, but anyways.
Thanks for cleaning up those music notes, covered those music notes out there a few weeks ago. Yeah, they were, they were music notes.
All right.
All right, thank you.
No-through truck signs?
Not yet.
Oh, me. Dave, don't go nowhere. Oh, who's coming, Tommy's coming?
There's no comment.
Is this on that subject? Well, oh, okay. On that subject.
Tommy, they just wanted you to get up.
Can we make a public comment during this one?
We'll change it next council, we'll talk about it next council meeting.
Really? Do we not have community service in this town?
Dave, that's my point.
Why do we not have the people that are destroying the bike path cleaning it up?
It's a matter of-
Drug addicts, the drunks.
It's a matter, it's a matter of finding them.
All right. Um, that's something that, that's something the court would have to handle. That would, something court would have to handle.
And it should be.
Well, we could talk to the chief after the meeting.
I mean, they're constantly destroying that bike path daily.
Juvenile hearing board, when they get there, young-
All right, no-through truck signs.
That's me. Uh, Dave, coming from, uh, Main Street to, uh, Wakefield Street, by the time, right near the fire, and Lippen, by the time they see that, no trucks, they're already in. If we can move that out, I seen the one on Provinia Street and Wakefield Street, that's good. Uh, and we got a problem with now Crestwood and Wakefield. They're cutting down there with tractor trailers, even the mattress, uh, trucks. They're cutting through the neighborhood, they have no true trucking on where we had the problem going through the neighborhood, but now they're cutting through Crestwood. Can we put one on Wakefield and Crestwood? And the second part of that is, Chief, you still here? Chief, Friday and Saturdays, we're almost getting killed on that road with tractor trailers coming around that bend before you hit Midville. It is so dangerous. Could you please let your men enforce it and start ticketing these tractor trailers that are cutting through? These big ten-wheelers that are cutting through? Uh, I mean, I could see if an oil truck's coming to make a delivery, if, if, if a box truck's coming to make a delivery with furniture. I mean, once they start getting ticketed, I almost got clipped twice myself. My constituents in River Farms, they cross that yellow, double-yellow line, and, and you take your, your hearts in your mouth when you come around that corner.
Yeah, I've had a conversation with her prior to the last council meeting. We did stop over at the bus, uh, depot there, the Academy Buses, we spoke to them. They were very receptive about going through. And we, I have put it out, as a matter of fact, we issued a violation about a week and a half ago for, for no-through trucking. So we are watching it and we'll continue to monitor it for you.
It's bad, Fridays and Saturdays where they're cutting through tractor trailers.
Got it right here for you, we'll put it down.
Thank you, Chief. I'm done.
Westworld Causin' Authority?
Okay, appointments, um, just a quick thing. On last ballot, we actually had the, uh, question on there about adding two more bodies to this board. Our constituents asked for it, um, so we put it on the ballot and got voted on. The logistical part of it is, right now, it's a five-year term as a staggered five-year appointments expiring. So every year, one person gets renewed. And I think three of them, or four of them are here tonight. So every year, they get renewed, but it's, like I said, staggering. So right now, if Deb Taco gets appointed this year, her name comes up again in five more years. Cause it's a five-person board. Now it's a seven-person board. The question we had, and Paula had for me, and I said I have to bring it before the council, because your guess is as good as mine, because it's still in charter as a five-year board, that what do we do with these two new appointments as far as their expiration? Do we have them three expire on the same year? Or do we do, one right now is like a three-year and a four-year, and then you have like, one will go one year, then two another year, two another year, then one and one?
The newest-
Because we don't have a seven-year term.
The newest, the newest members should be put on one year. Reappointment, they're, they're, uh-
You're still gonna have the same problem though.
My suggestion, if you wanna get two-
You can do one and a two.
Five-year appointments on a seven-year staggered-
No, they don't want, yeah, be-
No, there's only gonna be five on a five-year term, two are alternates.
No, but the two alternates, are they gonna be a five-year term alternate?
Uh, I don't, I, I wouldn't say make them a five-year term.
Well, the only question I would ask is, if you wanted to have everybody on a five-year staggered term, including the alternates, then you'd have seven years where it'd be five, 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 and five. Then you just have to do the math backwards to, to address the two and the-
I think that gets complicated.
It, it gets complicated if you do it year to year too, because-
Just with two of them, you doesn't.
What if you just add the two to, to this year's appointment, and they come up in five years? So in five years, it'd be three. But, right? So one, 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 and one, and then-
Establish, establish how long you want the alternates to be appointed. You want it for, what, do you want it year to year, or do you want a three-year appointment or a five-year appointment? If you're gonna do a five-year appointment, then take all seven, stagger them, but the last two hires, as Angel suggested, you've already got people in a five-year staggered program, you're gonna have to figure out when they would get to the seven.
And then, the other, the other question that was brought up, it was brought to me outside, would, would the alternates be involved in executive sessions and whatever else?
Only when someone's missing, just like the planning board. Whoever sits there and zoning.
Same thing.
Same thing, we do it the same way.
So-
They shouldn't be involved if they're not gonna vote. They could be at meetings, but executive session, only if they're gonna say, if someone's missing, they take that place, and then they stay on that until that is resolved.
Sounds right.
And I, and, and the housing authorities here, and I, I invited them here tonight on this matter to discuss it, so Josh, if you wanna come up, I mean, uh-
Executive Director, Steve.
Mr. Rock, if you wanna come up, Steve? Uh, you could just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Stephen Rock, Nine Country Drive. I don't see any issue with it, if, if it's gonna be, first of all, forty-five, twenty-five, or forty-five, twenty-six of the general laws said they'll be appointed for staggered five-year terms. Even the bill that was passed in July, doesn't say anything about alternates.
Right.
It says commissioners. So there, then, there's no alternates, they become commissioners on the housing if they, if you do the appointment.
So they'll be seven members.
Should be a seven-member board.
Yeah, it's not, they don't sit there to be, uh, you know, if somebody's ill and fills, fills in. And I thought your suggestion, Councilman, is fine. You appoint them for five-year terms, and, and in five years, you do three appointments, you do three more appointments. You'll always find somebody to serve on that.
All right, so it seems very, I just wanna make sure that the council's in agreement, they are, so there'll be full members. Okay, it's not alternates.
So that's what the law states, that they're full, there's no alternates like we do with other boards.
If you appoint three to five-year terms, you get the future. If you wanna get all seven on five-year staggered terms, you can address it in the future.
Yeah, you'd have to, you have to go back to the General, General Assembly to do that.
Uh, yes and no, because if under the five years, as long as they got five-year terms, so for example, if somebody had to go six, six to get their five?
I don't mind giving them five now.
No, you can, you're gonna give them five now.
You'd give them five now, because originally, whatever the numbers was, it was staggered, so every five years it'd alternate, but all houses, all houses had a different size. Uh, when I ran Providence, we had eleven. And every few years, they come and go, or actually, most of them got reappointed. Any other questions on that?
Does anybody have any question for Steve?
Give us some good appointments, though.
And, and for the record, this is, this is Steve Rock, he actually signed on for another three and a half years, so, uh-
Three years and two months.
You're not counting Steve, are you? Huh? You're not counting, are you?
I'm not. I mean, it could be worse, I could be the town administrator, have to do that. Although I was the deputy director of administration for Providence for a number of years, but, okay? Any other questions?
Thanks, Steve.
I look forward to dealing with you in the future on some other presentations.
I gotta take this, I got everybody calling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, uh, moving into claims.
Are we done with this?
Yeah, it's gonna be on next, next month's agenda.
Claims resolved at the town council. Do I say, claims. Joanne C. Roberts filed fifty-five, fifty-seven Plasky Street, amount two-hundred and fifty dollars. Resolved at the town council, hereby denies this claim.
By what?
Is that correct?
How can the council deny the claim if they haven't heard it?
This is, I'm reading what it says here.
No, we're just gonna, we're just gonna hear the claim on, uh-
Omit, omit the resolution, omit the word denies.
Yeah.
Here's the following claim against the town.
Uh, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
That Dave's coming in?
Yeah. Where is he?
What's going on?
We got two guys on the phone.
I think there might be some complications.
So can we return to this?
You can tee that? We can table it if you want, you can return it.
Hold on, let's, let's, let's- Let's, let's let David come back in for a minute. We take a five-minute recess.
No, we're gonna resolve it.
It's right there. Dave.
All right.
You're on the phone, I don't want one mouse.
What's the matter?
Somebody's in my house while the kids are in the wife's upstairs.
What?
Somebody's in the house.
They're okay? Nicole's there too, right?
No, Nicole's gone.
Go home, Dave.
Go, David.
All right, just have John.
Dave, call me, let me know how you make out. You gotta call.
That's all right.
Go home. Where's Dave? Dave Lombari.
Dave Lombari.
Come on up, you're on. Claims.
The claims.
Tell you, I don't know what this world's coming to.
Crazy. So this is on, uh, Robatai? The Arbor on Plasky. Plasky Street, yeah. You wanna fill us in?
You wanna look at it?
Dave, good.
My letters, not here?
Dave.
My letter?
Yeah, I got it right now, here, give this to him.
Yeah, this, um, claim came in through the clerk's office like they normally do, and, uh, Paula actually gave it to me. And I went out and looked at it, and, uh, I think I spoke with Jason about it also. And, uh, the claim was that part of the trellis was damaged from slush. It's one of those, uh, plastic, uh, white plastic fences in the trellis, where they get cold, they get brittle, or you look at it wrong and they crack. It's one of those things. But the problem I have with this is that the trellis broke, which was behind the fence, but none of the fence got damaged, but yet the trellis supposedly got damaged. But there was nothing left of the trellis that I could look at to examine, because somebody took it all out and got rid of it. And, you know, I'm supposed to, uh, make a determination what happened, but yet the stuff wasn't there to look at.
And there was no evidence for you to look at, to hear what the observation of Mrs. Casey was.
Right. So, I mean, and when I looked at it, it wasn't even winter time. Uh, there was, there was no snow on the ground, no ice on the ground, I couldn't tell what was where or anything.
I couldn't tell what was where or anything. The sidewalk over there is, I believe, five feet wide, and the fence and the arbor is behind that. I mean, I don't know how she estimated the speed of the truck. I mean, she assumes it was our truck.
Did she give you any information as whether or not she had made any claim?
I didn't speak with her. I spoke with the, I just read the police report.
But there was no, there was no discussion or information regarding whether or not a claim had been made against our homeowners?
No.
She called, did she call when it was, when it was damaged during the snow?
On the form, three A, says that she did not seek compensation from anyone else.
Did she, did she put in the claim when it happened?
No.
No, well, hang on, hang on. I can clear some of this up. Yeah, she's, um, I spoke with the homeowner. She's in my ward. I did speak with Dave about this. I spoke about, to Dave about this months after the issue happened, and I'm just gonna read the email that she had sent to me. March fourteenth, there was a snowstorm. It was that heavy snowstorm that we had. School was canceled. Sitting in the front enclosed porch, witness to town plow, plow drive-by plowing the street at a heavy slush going in excess of speed limit of twenty-five. I'm familiar with how vehicle sounds visually appears when they are in excess of the speed limit. On March fifteenth, called West Walk DPW and spoke to Tracy, the receptionist, reported damage by slush thrown by town snowplow to lattice work on the arbor. Was told we were being put on the list. Now, we hadn't spoken at this point. Late March, DPW worker came to the house, spoke to my husband, Stephen, and took many photos of the arbor. Weeks went by and called Tracy and was told we were still on the list, but it was gonna take some time because a lot of damage was being called in for a late winter storm. In the meantime, my father became ill, was hospitalized, and passed away early in April. Last thing we wanted to be concerned about was fixing the arbor at that point. The lattice work was broken by the force of heavy slush being pushed away by town plow. Now, before I go further with this, I'm not saying there's anything malicious done at all. I can, I can understand just by this entrance, if this is the arbor where the, where the opening is, the lattice is on this side, slush came in, caught the lattice, cracked the lattice. I can see it happening. I didn't see the lattice. So, again, we had conversations about this. In April, and I said, again, I still wasn't involved at this point, Stephen, myself, and my mother, who lives at fifty-seven Pulaski, which is right next door to Duplex, who originally installed the fence in Arbor by Ventura Fence approximately fifteen years ago, each separately called DPW to check on our status on the list, and we were told it was a long list, and we were still on it, and they would get to us when it was our turn. Which, that I can also understand because we had a lot going on at that point, a lot of damages. In May, Stephen drove to DPW on Junior Street and spoke to Tracy in person. Now, at that point, before they went down there, they had called me and told me the situation, and then I had called Dave, and then we talked about it. Now, we're in May now, two months after the storm. I didn't get involved because they said they went down to DPW and they didn't want me to get involved at that point. It was fine. Then they were told that they didn't say their name on the list, but they were physically added to the list right in front of us. This was in May. So, I'm just reading what, what I have. All of this time, we were never instructed to submit a claim, call the police, or anything else, except to wait for the DPW because we were gonna be next on the list. Now, at that point, I had thought they already went through this procedure, so I didn't, I didn't backtrack with them. I just assumed they were on the list to get this fixed. June nineteenth, they emailed me again describing the dilemma and asked if we could help get a resolution. June twentieth, they called DPW and spoke with Tracy. She was going to tell the workers that since it was not a landscaping issue, that maybe the arbor would be fixed by DPW workers sooner. There was confusion that we were requesting loom and sod and not repair or replacement. June twenty-first, she emailed me letting me know what had taken place. After a phone call to DPW in two thousand sixteen, I guess there was an issue in two thousand sixteen, that DPW workers came to the house and were able to put the lattice work that was not damaged back into slots of Arbor without damaging any part of Arbor. In two thousand sixteen, I didn't have to call the police to make a police report or fill out a claim form. That's before me. I don't know anything about that. June twenty-seventh, let me know the arbor has made a very sturdy resin. It was constructed out of quality materials to last. It was at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars fifteen years ago. So, looking at what's standing with the arbor, I mean, it's not something which I thought originally, just go to Home Depot, replace it. It's not. July eighteenth, they were sent to process of what they had to do to go through the claims. Also, on July eighteenth, called the, called the police. Police went down. I actually went down there at that point on my way because we had interviews here for the town manager. So, on my way here, I stopped down there. I checked it out. They filled out the police report with the officer. They ended up, they were not able to get their claim from when they filled out the police report, and that which further added to the situation. This was on August second. They started email correspondence with Jessica Nye at the police department. Was told that they had to request a police report by filling out a person with interest form. The attorney general's office is very strict on what the police departments can release. August second, emailed Jessica Nye, the person with the interest form. Jessica responded saying she was forwarding to Lieutenant Malloy. Was, I was unable to complete the town claim form until I was able to include this list police report. August fifteenth, emailed Jessica Nye regarding the status. August twenty-third, still no email from Lieutenant Malloy. August twenty-third, finally received an email with Lieutenant Malloy with the report. They've been sitting tight, hoping this is the end of the email. Have been sitting tight, hoping West Walk would resolve this seemingly simple issue with a fair resolution of fixing the lattice work damage caused by the town plows excessive speed, plowing heavy slush along, along the sidewalk at fifty-five, fifty-seven Pulaski Street. Please just resolve this issue by paying the bill that Ventura Fence will issue me once more when we fix the arbor, the arbor, and please instruct the snowplow operators to proceed with caution when plowing Pulaski Street so we don't end up in the same situation next year, which is something that I'm, I want to bring forward. Again, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. What I'm saying is, I don't think there's any malicious intent. From what this woman's been through, just, I think we should pay the two hundred and fifty-dollar claim. I don't, I don't want DPW to come out and fix it for the simple reason that I want to kind of wash our hands of it. But my question is the future. Again, this is twice, I guess, that we have gone out for this, for this property because of snow, in two years, according to this email.
Can I ask a question? Is there a list that you guys create regarding damage done?
If there's plow damage, yeah. They can call in.
So, if a plow-
A land, a plow hits a landscaping timber, a mailbox.
The problem with this storm was-
And the problem, it's not the plow actually hitting the mailboxes or the fences or the-
It's the slush.
It's the slush off the end of the plow. I mean, if you notice the plow-
You know as well as I do, some of these guys, some of these guys, I seen them on Main Street. They're coming fifty miles an hour. They throw slush. They hit every house on, on, in David's ward. I was right there. I, I couldn't catch the truck driver because I was stopped. This was two years ago. But I mean, I seen where it's-
And that driver was disciplined.
I don't know if you've got whoever it was.
I know exactly who it was. He was disciplined. The driver that was in this area is a good driver. He does not drive fast.
Let me just say this, Dave. I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I was on the plows that day, and the people I were with, the gentlemen that I were with, driving, they had plenty of experience. They, they weren't driving excessively, but the force of the ice was powerful. And in my ward, again, and these gentlemen were not doing anything wrong in terms of speed, I had two people knocked over, physically knocked over, plowing the ends of their driveway, and it was because of this wall of ice. So, the real question here is, you know, do we, do we award it and set a precedent? I mean, Dave states here, he doesn't think we should be responsible for this material every time one is damaged because it is lattice. But the other side of it is, in this particular storm, it was forceful, and it wasn't the driver so much as all the slush and, you know, it was, we knew it was taking down mailboxes. I don't know if it was so much the speed as much as the, the actual force of the ice. It was, it was pretty strong.
If this woman, if this woman didn't sustain that damage and, and wanted to put in a claim, I know if I was making a phony thing because it was cracked, you wouldn't be paying two hundred and fifty dollars. I'd be going for the fifteen hundred.
And does this really set a precedent? I mean, each one is individual based.
It's quite a process, too.
You gotta, you gotta understand, sir, for, snow, it's an act of God.
Yeah, but not when you're putting it there, Timmy.
Wait, 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 you have a city in town that offers a service which is plow. Now, if something happens, there still has to be an investigation. My question simply is this. Normally, I've lived over in that area for the last twenty-five years. I've lived in, probably fifty. Usually, cars parked in front of where they live. Is there anything evidence-wise that confirms what they said that happened on that day? Because in their report, it says it happens either at ten o'clock AM or ten o'clock PM, but then on the police report, it says it happens at midnight.
Well, first of all, I didn't get this, I didn't get this until September.
No, but the email, I'm, I'm gonna-
But she's been going on here for six months.
No, no, but the email was contemporary to the incident, correct? When's, when's the date of your email?
The email came to me. I asked her to send me a timeline of everything.
When did she send you your first email?
Hang on, we're going back.
Sometime in March, I believe, you said, right?
Yeah, we're, no, we're going back around May, too. I'd have to look, but we're, we're going back around May when I got this.
All right, so two months after the incident happens, they, they contacted the council person. My question is more in line with, she indicated to the councilman in her email that they notified the Department of Public Works and were put on a list. Do you have any evidence to support that?
They may have called up and said that there was some plow damage, and then we would go out and look at it.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not sure who went out and looked. Could have been Freddie.
But somebody went out because they indicated that somebody went out and took pictures.
But that doesn't mean, just because they went out and looked at it, doesn't mean that we're responsible.
No, but Dave, was there a report? After they went out and looked at it and took the pictures, did somebody provide a report?
Not that I've seen. And then I get, I get a police report here with the incident dated at March fourteenth, but it's signed September fifth, and I went out and looked at it the very next day when I got it from Paula.
Two months, two months is going by, my friend.
Yeah, and there's no way that I could see slush. I couldn't see snow. I couldn't see ice.
She was put off from-
It's September.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm just saying that-
From day one, she's saying she talked to Tracy. She talked to this one. She talked to that one.
I'm trying to get at somebody from DPW, they're at home.
Right.
Talk to them. Took pictures.
According to the email, what she told me, yes.
Right, took pictures. But you don't have a report?
No, I have, I have a, a, a report that her name was on the list.
Right.
But I have, nobody went out to look at it.
Well, that's all.
So, I don't know. Who's she saying looked at it?
When we, when we first spoke about this, Dave and I, it was very clear that Dave knew nothing about this.
Yeah.
And it just was just coming to me. As soon as I spoke with her, I called you.
Property damage claims are difficult because, one, normally, you're gonna have a deductible. Two, you don't know if the property was damaged before the ice would have hit it. There's a lot of different things to look at.
Yeah, but again, Tim, why would she put two fifty when she put fifty hundred?
Angelo, I'm not disputing any of that. All I'm trying to say is that if they said a person from the Department of Public Works went out there and took photographs, that would be part of this. You don't have any of that.
No, sir.
So, the only thing you have to go on is what she's saying.
Correct.
All right, so, that's, that's, that's the evidence, that's the evidence she has now.
I mean, she talked to DPW. She kept checking with Tracy. She kept saying she was checking with Tracy. I think that's our fault that we don't have a report on it, but she continued to call. I, I would, I would say to give it a two fifty and get rid of this.
I agree.
So, can we take a vote?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we pay the two fifty.
Roll, is it roll call or?
No.
You wanna do roll call?
I don't know.
Okay. Jason?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
And I vote yes, paying the claim.
Just get rid of it.
Angelo, two seconds.
Oh, Luchati.
Nice. So, wait a minute. Going, going forward now, though, I mean, this is, all right, say, this is behind us. We know it's gonna snow again. We know the plow driver's gonna, whether they're going twenty or forty.
Can I make a suggestion? This is not on the agenda, but at the next council meeting, how to address claims? Because, again, this is out there for people to see. If they don't take advantage of filing the claims, that's their own ignorance.
Okay.
What got me is she called numerous times and didn't get any answer, and Dave didn't even know about it, so, I mean, we gotta, we'll, we'll discuss.
I have to go out and look at it because if it's gonna be a major claim and I'm gonna have, and I have to submit it to the trust.
Right.